Good evening. Welcome to our September School Board Meeting. It's good to see everybody here and have a packed room here. Looks like we've got a lot of exciting things here on the, on the agenda. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, if you please rise for our pledges and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Texas flag?
Amen, Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state of our God, one of the invisible.
If you'd please raise your hands. Elizabeth and I, we have Ty McDonald from Old Church of Bastrop here to open us up with a word of prayer. Ty, thank you for being here. Ty has also served as a past school board member and will thank you for your service as well.
Thank you. Let's bow our head in reverence. Father, I thank you that you are present in all places and at all times and I thank you that you're present here with us on tonight. I thank you, Father, that you raise up leaders and that you set them in their places and I thank you that you have raised up these leaders and I just speak your blessing upon them on tonight. A blessing like that that was upon Daniel for wisdom and knowledge and skill and understanding and doing the things that you have called and appointed them to do. I speak a blessing upon this district and I thank you, dear Father, that this district will rise to be a shining light in this city, in this county, in this region, and in this state. I thank you, dear Father, that you go and that you heal the brokenhearted, that you heal those, dear Father, that are in emotional and mental distress. Dear Father, those who have been abused, that you bring healing, that you bring safety. And I just speak a fiery hedge of protection around all of the students because you say that the angels of children always behold your face and so I thank you that your angels go forth to protect them, to protect this district, to protect all the teachers, to protect the staff, to protect the administration, Father. I thank you that you go before us and that you fight for us and I just give you praise and honor and glory for all the things that have been done in this district and I thank you for good success and that as they go forward, dear Father, you bless the work of their hands. And, dear God, I just thank you that always you are with us and that you are for us. In the name of your Son, Yahshua, it is so and it shall not be otherwise. Amen.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Edwards, would you please introduce our student speaker for this evening?
Yes, sir, that would be my pleasure. Our student speaker on the character education trait for September, the trait is honesty, and our speaker this evening is Noah Taywater. Come on up, Noah, there he is. Noah is a fifth grade student at Colony Oaks Elementary School. Noah enjoys playing basketball in Hoop Stars, playing drums, and drawing. He loves the drums, Mom and Dad. I like that. He's been a finalist in the Salinas Art Festival, placing first and second, and then top ten across multiple years. He was a member of the PALS in third and fourth grade and is currently signed up to participate in the fifth grade Cougar Safety Patrol at our new campus, Colony Oaks. When he grows up, Noah wants to be an architect and design his own home. Noah, the mic is yours.
I would like to thank Ms. Kaismar Ms. Fitzhugh for the opportunity to represent Colony Oaks Elementary and speak about honesty today. Honesty is to tell the truth regardless of the consequences. When you commit to being an honest person, you're letting the world know that your word means something. I think honesty is the most important character trait because it's the foundation for all other positive character traits. Being honest with others as well as ourselves helps us make good choices and be accountable for our actions. Honesty isn't always easy though, like when your dad cooks Brussels sprouts and wants to know how they taste.
Now we know.
Being honest may mean hurting someone's feelings, being in more trouble, or it may even mean losing a few friends. But being honest builds trust so people know they can count on you. It can keep you out of trouble and it helps you keep the right friends. It can be scary not knowing which way your honesty is going to go, but always remember, honesty is the best policy. Telling the truth takes courage and integrity. We all make mistakes, so it is important to be honest about them so people know that they can trust you. Thanks to my honesty, I have earned the trust of my parents, my teachers, and my friends. At my previous school, my teachers designated me as a substitute teacher helper because they knew I wouldn't trick the substitute into giving us free time all day. I was also part of our PALS program. This meant I was responsible for helping our younger students and setting a good example. I'm proud of the reputation I'm creating for myself thanks to my honesty. I'd like to end on a quote from the, from Mr. Rogers. Honesty is often very hard. The truth is often painful, but the freedom it can bring is worth the trying. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak this evening on the character trait of honesty.
Well done, Noah. So Noah, I know your family, but if you would, introduce your family to the rest of the crowd.
So today I'm here with my dad, my sister, and my mom. My dad's name is Chris Taywater. My sister's name is Harper Taywater and my mom's Emily Taywater.
Well done, thank you and thank you all for being here. Noah, here's your gift.
Thank you.
Noah, before you run off, tell us about the new campus, the new, the new school.
I like it. It's very fun. I like all the new supplies. There's not as many crazy scratches and stuff on the desk. The textbooks don't have stuff written in all of them and yeah.
Okay, that's enough honesty for one night. I'm kidding, Noah, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy.
Each month I have the pleasure and the honor to sit with students from each of our high schools and it's called the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. We had our first meeting this, for, for the school year this month, last week, and we have some representatives from our council here with us this evening and I'm gonna have them introduce themselves, school, grade, and plans for after high school. And I'm gonna start with the gentleman, Mr. Edgar, if you would. Edgar, introduce yourself to the, to the audience and tell us.
Hi, my name is Edgar Guzman Rangel. I go to Circa, I'm a senior now. And after high school, I plan on going to Sam Houston State. I was just accepted around two weeks ago.
Brooke?
Hi, my name is Brooke Godfrey. I go to Cedar Creek High School and after high school, I'm not exactly sure what I wanna do, but I think I'm gonna go do A&amp;M.
Sounds good. Thank you, Brooke, for being here. Emma?
My name is Emma Griesenbeck. I'm a junior at Bastrop High School and after high school, I wanna go to Texas A&amp;M University also.
There you go. Nice. Fallon?
My name is Fallon Hall and I'm a senior at Bastrop High School and my plans are to be a labor and delivery nurse, either at Tarleton University or A&amp;M.
Congratulations. Thank you all for being here.
Ms. Noley?
Oh, there's Kaylee. I didn't see you back there. Kaylee?
My name is Kaylee. I'm a senior at Cedar Creek and I'm hoping to go to Texas Tech where I'll become a physician assistant in pediatrics.
Nice. Thank you, Kaylee.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, and students, thank you for being here. It means a lot. All right, this time we'll move into our recognitions and special presentations. First item there is AP scholarships and College Board National Recognitions. Cheryl Pinkston, which is our Advanced Academics Coordinator, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Hi, welcome. Glad to be here. And first of all, I'm asking you to be honest, did you think you would have this many seats at this first board meeting?
Well, we tried to plan for it. We were still short, so congratulations to you, Cheryl, and to all of our kids and families.
First of all, I'm so excited to have everybody here. But every fall, the College Board recognizes high school students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on multiple AP exams and PSAT testing. This year, we have twenty-nine students in grades eleven and twelve who have received the title of AP Scholar. This number has doubled in one year's time. We are also honoring forty-one juniors and seniors who were College Board National Recognition recipients. You might ask, what is the difference between these two awards? AP Scholars are students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. College Board National Recognition is received by scoring in the top ten percent of Texas students on the PSAT and maintaining a three-point-five GPA or higher. They were also score-eligible if they scored a three or higher on two or more of the AP exams during that period. I am proud of the hard work and dedication these students have shown to reach this achievement. I also wanna thank their families for instilling a commitment to continued learning and growth and I can't wait to see what they accomplish in the future. So we are gonna begin with Bastrop High School. I'm gonna ask Ms. Gabriel if she'll come forward with their certificates. I'm gonna call the students who are here in attendance, but we have several students that are listed on the board for those of you to read and acknowledge them also. So we're gonna start with Caleb Kadina as an AP Scholar. Landon Cunningham, an AP Scholar. Sophia Garcia, National Recognition. Callie Lozano, National Recognition. Sydney Moylan, AP Scholar and National Recognition. Isaac Ruder, Isaac, I got it, okay, National Recognition. Is there anyone from Bastrop High School that snuck in after I did? Would you give these students a wonderful round of applause? Next up, we will have Cedar Creek High School. We're gonna begin with Luke Bauer, an AP Scholar with Distinction. Annabelle Bordelon is here for National Recognition. Hacia Serra Blanco, National Recognition. Connor Coleman, AP Scholar. Alexander Lopez, AP Scholar. Is there anyone else who snuck in? I heard there was something with band tonight, too. There you go. Congratulations. Our next campus is Circa. We're gonna start with Deborah Acosta, who is an AP Scholar with Honors. Darius Ganson is here for National Recognition. Edgar Guzman Rangel, National Recognition. Hunter Liskowski, AP Scholar and National Recognition. Angela Lopez, AP Scholar and National Recognition. Erin Loyia, National Recognition. Isaiah Molina, AP Scholar and National Recognition. Michaela Orr, AP Scholar. Evelyn, and Evelyn, I'm gonna let you say your last name, Panayagua. I wrote it down, but it's like a, National Recognition. Zofia Ramos, AP Scholar. Allison Suarez, AP Scholar. Odin Turner, National Recognition. Annika Wilkinson, AP Scholar. Tara Williams, AP Scholar. Stacy Zoo, AP Scholar with Honor and National Recognition. We are continually amazed and impressed with all you do and all you have given of your studies. There's many times I'm sure you could have been doing other things and chose your academics. We're very, very proud of you. Thank you. We have one other thing, but we're gonna hold it and so we're gonna tease the board with, we'll be back next month with something really big.
Congratulations. Yeah, she did. Yep, that's it.
All right, while we let the crowd exit the room here, Ms. Trevino will make her way on up here. We're going to discuss business and community partners. Mr. Trevino, Ms. Trevino is the Director of Community Relations.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I appreciate you all allowing me the opportunity to recognize three business partners and community organizations that have been instrumental in the success of Bastrop ISD. If, if you are out here, I would invite you to come up. We've got a certificate for you and we would love a photo opportunity. So our first recognition goes to Greater Texas Federal Credit Union, represented by Steven Rodriguez, who's the branch manager. Greater Texas Credit Union has supported Bastrop ISD schools for many years. On October twenty-fifth of this year, they'll be hosting the BEST College Night where students will be able to meet with college and career recruiters and find out about scholarship opportunities. Seniors will also be able to turn in their application for a five-hundred-dollar scholarship, which will be awarded to one senior from each campus later in the year. We appreciate your support. Next up, we have Community of Hope, represented by Pastor Mary Butler. Community of Hope is a food pantry that's been opened to meet the needs of children, families, and adults in the Cedar Creek area. Working in conjunction with the Central Texas Food Bank and Friendship Bible Baptist Church, they've provided approximately twenty emergency food boxes to BISD families over each of the past several months. In July, they supported us by supplying hot meals and cool fans to our families. They'll be helping us with turkey for our Thanksgiving baskets and supplying birthday bags filled with cake mix, frosting, and birthday decorations in the weeks and months to come. Thank you so much. And finally, last but not least, we have Remax of Bastrop Area, represented by Zia Low, who is the broker and owner. And Zia has been a member of the Citizens Advisory Task Force and was instrumental in getting out the vote for both our 2021 and 2023 bonds. She remains a strong advocate of public education and a supporter of Bastrop ISD schools through both the We Believe in BISD sponsorships and providing wish list items for teachers. Most recently, she was selected as President of the newly-formed Kiwanis Club of Bastrop County, an organization dedicated to improving the world, one child and one community at a time. We appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, community partners, we really do appreciate it. It means a lot. We're growing and it takes everybody to move things forward here and keep things going. So at this time, we'll move into our spotlight speaker, which is Elliot Allen. He's our Director of Athletics. He's gonna share the presentation with us that he shared at the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce luncheon. So, Coach, tell us something exciting.
We got a lot of good things going. First of all, good evening, Mr. Edwards and the board. We appreciate the opportunity to come up and talk about all the things athletics, but we had the, the pleasure of going and speaking to the, the chamber for the luncheon the other day and it's a great opportunity to go out and thank our business community members for all their support. And I'm gonna spend just a few minutes. Coach Greedo and Coach Thomas are kinda finishing up practice and so they ran through some of the highlights and I'll, you know, just, we got a lot of great things going, but I'm gonna try to cut it down a bit just for the sake of time. But starting off at Bastrop volleyball, we've had a very competitive preseason. We've actually, through the preseason, we've won more games than we won all of last year. We're off to a one-and-two start in district and we are looking forward to some good things. Our tennis program has really been a shining star there at Bastrop. They're currently nine-and-two in the, in the team tennis deal and it's a different, different kind of element than what you deal with in the spring and really proud of them. Golf is, I believe this week, they're gonna be, they're gonna have, they're gonna be involved in their tournament here. Largest numbers we've had in a long time, we're gonna be able to field two girls teams and two boys teams and life is gonna be good there. Cross-country, we have over forty runners, which is, you know, that's, that's a pretty big number. And, you know, they've, they've really been improving, they're just getting started on their season and they, they really believe that they're gonna have quite a few opportunities to get folks to advance to the regional meet. Football is off to a strong start. They're currently three-and-one on the season and they have won some very, very close football games. I'd rather them be a lot more than that, but we'll take wins however they come, so we're excited about what they're doing. On the Cedar Creek side, you know, golf is looking strong. They took third in the Austin Anderson Tournament not too long ago. Tennis started district play a couple, a couple of weeks ago, doing strong, getting better as a team. Cross-country over at Cedar Creek is, numbers are growing, like literally growing, and they started off with thirteen and now they're at twenty-nine. So, you know, just within the course of the season, they've, they've picked up some, some numbers and they've already pulled, pulled home quite a few medals throughout the course of the season. Volleyball, they started off the year, had, had some injuries early on, but they've, they've really shown to, to improve. They, they won their first district game last week, so we're happy for them. Football team, have not got off to, got a win yet, but they've been very close. They've played much more competitive than they did a year ago. I think they're a hundred percent better football team than they were a year ago and we hope to, hope to see some good things coming. We all start district play next week in football and Cedar Creek's gonna be healthy, so we look forward to seeing that. And then just a couple of updates on both schools. Our athletic training program at both schools is, is very strong. We put a, a high emphasis on that and, and we're really proud of what's going on there. We have, the, the number of student trainers that we have has doubled, which is, it does two things. Number one, it increases the safety for all of our athletes, but probably more importantly, those students that we have that, that show an interest in anything in the medical field, it's an opportunity for them to go out and, and get their feet wet on that. Our football teams, both of them, again, they start district play next week. For the first time in a good while, both teams are fielding four, four football teams and so that's, that tells you that our numbers are strong and we're going in the right direction. And then lastly, volleyball, Bastrop High School is fielding four teams. And so that, when, when your participation levels are up like that, things are going well. We're excited, we're looking for a lot of great things this year and we thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right, thank you, Mr. Allen. There will be no open forum here this evening. It looks like no one's signed up, which should take us into our public hearing. We have Deana Edgar, our Chief Financial Officer, here to lead us through our public hearings on the proposed tax rate. We asked the audience that have any questions, please wait till after the, the presentation and then after that, we will entertain a motion afterwards. Ms. Edgar, it's all yours.
Good evening, everyone. I have a very brief but exciting presentation for you this evening. I thought that's why everyone was here, to the announcement of the tax rate. But everyone seemed to skedaddle, so. Just as a reminder, a public hearing is a requirement under Section forty-four of the Texas Education Code. So, we're gonna start with reminding the general public that the, the district must adopt two separate tax rates. One tax rate is for general operations called Maintenance and Operations, or MNO. The other one is for our debt service and it's also referred to as Interest and Sinking, or INS. And then on June twentieth, the district adopted a general fund budget of one-hundred-and-twenty-two point four million and a debt service budget of thirty point eight million. In order to support these adopted budgets, we are recommending a tax rate of sixty-six point nine-two cents for maintenance and operations and forty point one cents for debt service for an overall tax rate of a dollar seven. And this represents an eighteen-and-a-half cent decrease over the prior year. So looking at our tax rate history over the past ten years, you can see that we've been relatively consistent for the five years leading up to twenty-eighteen and then beginning in twenty-nineteen, we will have lowered the tax rate by thirty-seven cents over the past five years. Now, this is attributable to House Bill Three, which came out of the eighty-sixth legislative session, and then further tax compression with Senate Bill Two, which was passed in a special session this summer on July twenty-second. In looking at property value history over the years, the district has experienced substantial growth over the course of ten years, with twenty-twenty-three certified taxable values coming in approximately eight-point-six percent higher than the prior year. This is certified to certified, so you're looking at July twenty-twenty-two to July twenty-twenty-three. Now, interesting, our top ten taxpayers haven't changed in several years, but this year they have changed. You can see the top ten taxpayers in green represent new entities to the top ten. Seventy percent of our top ten taxpayers represent entities in, in both the utility space and in housing. And then looking at our tax base overall, our largest category is still residential at sixty-seven percent, but this did grow three percent over the, over this past year, which is pretty significant. That's followed by utilities at twenty percent, commercial property at ten percent, and then industrial at three percent. And then finally, to wrap up the public hearing, again, we are recommending a proposed tax rate of sixty-six point nine-two cents for maintenance and operations, forty point one cents for interest and sinking or debt service for a total tax rate of a dollar seven, which again represents an eighteen-and-a-half cent decrease from the prior year. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the public? All right, do we have any questions from the board? This time, that will conclude our hearing. And at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the tax property, excuse me, I move that the property tax rate on one-hundred dollars valuation for the district be set at a dollar seven point two for the tax year twenty-twenty-three.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Edgar, thank you very much. Great job. All right, that moves us into our superintendent's report and board discussion, the curriculum report, we have the twenty-twenty-three accountability update. We got Dr. Matt Wolfert here, our Associate Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening. Well, Deana actually debated who, who the audience was staying for and we both lost because, as you can see, they left on mine, too. I, too, also have a brief presentation for you about our accountability updates. We wanted to share this because the information has just come in and we want to keep you current on what information we have. But what we're excited to talk about is that BISD is on the pathway from good to great. You heard all the great things, all the AP Scholars, AP, the National Recognitions. You heard all the great things, all the AP Scholars, the national recognitions from athletics, from our campuses. There are so many wonderful things happening, including we've received many grants, our art programs continue to excel, our digital learning continues to enhance itself to where we're a one-to-one initiative in our sixth through twelfth grades. We just can keep upping our ante of what we can do here in Bastrop that we're really excited about. But what we know is that to get to that really great marker, to be a destination District of Excellence, we need to increase student achievement. The trickiest part about this all is TA isn't exactly making it easy on us. This information came out to us last year that they were going to change both the test, the accountability, the STAR test, and we've now dubbed it STAR two point oh, and the accountability system at the same time. What they also told us is they weren't going to give us a lot more information. We just had to kind of figure it out. They were going to drip information throughout the year. And what they basically told us was our timeline is we would get some information about Christmas time last year, some information late spring, and then we would know probably how our results came in this past summer. Well, that wasn't exactly helpful, but we still had to persevere and keep educating our students. All they really did tell us was that the system is going to be so radically different that we couldn't compare our results from 2022 to what the results we were going to get this year. So it was going to be a major shift. They also told us they were looking at basically overhauling everything, and they just gave us this laundry list of many, many, many things that could be changed. But again, we weren't going to know until the final accountability manual came out in late spring to know exactly what that was going to look like. And so we were on track, so we thought, until just this past week, when TA has said that they had to stop and pause because the accountability system as they knew it wasn't really giving accurate results. So we do have some data to share, but even it is not final and complete, and we are not expecting even that complete rating and accountability system data until now late fall, maybe late October or even into November. They realized that there are several areas that they want to go back and revisit, particularly in student growth measures. That said, we want to share how we are doing. And the first thing we want to put that in context is how we are doing compared to the state and how we're doing with our local Region thirteen districts. We're all in this together, and as you can see from here with our reading, math, science, and social studies scores, we're all scoring about right in that same percentage ratings. We're all seeing improvements over the last few years, and these gains show that the efforts we're making are improving, and we're keeping up with our peers. And to really illustrate that, what we have is we're going to show you some longitudinal data. But we knew going into this year that we had to make some adjustments. And so even prior to the data coming in, we started looking at what we could do to really think about improving teaching and learning in Bastrop. So some of the things that have already happened prior to us getting this data that we have done and that we're excited about is we have new leadership that is just bringing a lot of fresh energy to our team. We have new curriculum within our district, and we have a new focus around digital literacy and learning that's really going to help us as our students take those tests. So we really have some academic strategies designed to help improve when we get to our accountability test and system. But when we look at our five-year data, what you're going to see is, you see the benchmark year of COVID, because that's when we had the COVID slide, as they call it, and then we had the marker up there about STAR redesign, because we want that to note that that's when they're saying everything is very significantly different. For Bastrop, the good thing is, we managed to persevere past that, and our scores did not significantly change. In fact, in most cases, we saw small upticks, or if anything, very insignificant downturns. And so here in the elementary grades, this is third through fifth grade reading, and you'll see that in fourth grade, we saw a little bit of positive trend, and then third, fifth grade, we saw very small dips. And this was, again, after the STAR redesign. In our secondary, we saw very similar results. In sixth grade, English one and English two, we saw gains, and then seventh and eighth grade, very small drops. When we look at math, we saw very similar trends as well. Math, we saw very positive gains in our fourth and fifth grade, and a very, very tiny drop in third compared to the cohort last year. And then gains in seventh grade in Algebra One, and then small drops in sixth grade and eighth grade. Science, a bright spot for us was our high school biology EOC exam. We saw a pretty significant gain there, and then a slight drop in eighth grade, but the same slight positive increase in fifth grade. And another bright spot for us was in US History. In eighth grade and the high school US History EOC, we saw both positive upticks of five and ten percent respectively. So we are seeing us either stay where we're at, even with the new test design that's supposed to be much more challenging, or continuing to improve even with that being said. We do see some overall trends that we're excited about, those positive upticks, and we also know some cohort areas that we are going to, we're already tackling and we're addressing. So they're already on our radar, and we believe our academic strategies that we have in place are going to be able to address them. And what you're going to hear later on is during the CIP and DIP presentations, our campuses have planned really detailed campus improvement plans that are focused in on proving their Meets and Master's goals so that students continue to grow and become more academic and successful here in Bastrop. But I'm happy to take any questions about our accountability system at this point.
You mentioned Thursday night on our agenda review about working with the younger children in regards to how they take the test on the computer to, so they can get more comfortable possibly with the equipment to be able to navigate through the test a little easier, quicker, possibly?
Yes, sir. So that's why I referenced that we have a focus on digital and writing, because those little third graders have to take the test fully online, all the way through now. And so it's a question now whether do they know how to take the information, or do they just not know how to type? So we're really making sure that throughout the year, they have multiple opportunities to practice their technology skill sets, so that when it comes to testing time, it's not like, oh, wait, what do I have to do here? How do I navigate these? Because they have to not only do that to type paragraphs and little text responses, they have to drag and drop, they have to select multiple items. They're asking kids to do quite a bit with the computer skill sets.
Did any of the student advisory here have to take this test last year?
Were y'all EOCs? Did y'all take any EOCs? Yep. You have sister.
Any thoughts, or is it? No one likes this, but.
I would say the only thing that's difficult is if you, if you're on question twenty and you want to go back to question one, the numbers are in all of the box to just go to straight to it. You'd have to click through all of the pages, and so like that takes a lot of thinking. It's just harder to view your answers on the laptops than it is on paper, but that was my opinion.
Did you hear that question? Any feedback?
I don't. Start up, that's really the only complaint that happens. Sometimes it takes maybe half an hour, sometimes an hour, and it kind of just pushes everything forward throughout the day.
To actually get the test going?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe. That's good feedback. I'm sure you've heard a lot of that.
We have heard that, but reinforcing it is always good enough, too.
Right.
As we plan for this year.
Has there been any, in past years, we've had struggles with internet and all of that? Have we struggled with that at all, or is that still?
This past year, that wasn't the major barrier. Like you said, though, because every kid is getting on at the same time, it does take longer to start the testing.
Got it.
Every kid has to have their own ticket, they have to be logged in, and then that's when the projector can actually start the test. So it does take a little bit longer time.
But once they're on, we're not dropping, or?
It wasn't the major barrier this year. Luckily, there was no major storms also that cut everything out at once this time, too. So we, I know Randy's team, they went out and what they did is really did inventory checks before the test to make sure that there was enough bandwidth prior to the administrations.
Dr. Warford, I just have a quick question. So now that TEA knows that there are some barriers and issues with regard to testers, you know, having issues with typing or whatever the case might be in that redesign, are those modifications done, or is that all still in progress, and has that been communicated?
So TA is not changing any of theirs. They're expecting the districts to adapt. And so the honest truth is what they're going to say is it is a TIC, beginning in second grade, that our students have to start being technology proficient. And so it is, they're saying it is up to us to start building that skill set as early as second grade, so that they can be. It's just a big jump right away into third grade.
Also a retroactive kind of redesign, essentially.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Seems like adding a lot on to their already pretty busy curriculum to teach them to keyboard and how to operate a computer.
It's another thing. It's another thing without taking anything else off, absolutely, yes, sir.
All right. Dr. Warford, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. All right, moving along here, we will hear a report on the 2023-2024 budget for ESUP, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and migrant. Kendra Mock, which is the Director of School Improvement, federal and state programs.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Edwards and board members. Tonight, we'll be sharing some information with you about the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESUP, for the 23-24 school year. ESUP is an acronym for Every Student Succeeds Act, which allows our district flexibility in using federal funds to maximize student outcomes and to support schools engaged in continuous improvement. During this short presentation, we're going to cover all the titles, and we'll be looking at some private nonprofit information. The purpose of Title One Part A is to provide all children a significant opportunity to receive a fair and equitable and high-quality education and to close educational achievement gaps. Federal funds are currently allocated through a formula that is based primarily on census poverty estimates and the cost of education in each state. In BISD, we have twelve campuses designated as Title One. These are elementary through middle schools, and each of these campuses is responsible for documenting and tracking how their Title One funds are used. And these strategies might include campus programs, interventions, tutorials, professional development, and parental involvement. Here you see a budget comparison for our Title One Part A funds between the 22-23 school year and our current year. And as you can see, we do have a significant amount of funding dedicated to payroll. This year, we have funding also pointed at supplies and materials for our new high-quality instructional materials. Parent and family engagement work at both campus and the district level is also supported by this budget, and salaries for our migrant and Family and Social Services Coordinator come out of this budget. So here are the payroll costs by category. You can see what we're spending funds on at the district level and at the campus level, and these campus-level positions are varied by campus, but each of our Title One campuses does have a district instructional coach, and most have a paraprofessional. Some use their funds to pay teachers and other staff members extra duty pay for planning or for providing parent and family engagement. Now, Title One Part C funds are designed to help migratory students succeed in school and successfully transition to post-secondary education or employment. And PIM's data for our district shows there has been a decrease in our identified migrant students. We went from ninety-two students to thirty-five total. The purpose of Title Two Part A is to increase student achievement and to support teachers, principals, and other school leaders in their work to improve the overall quality of instruction. This can be thought of as teacher and principal recruitment and training. In BISD, we use a lot of our Title Two funds for professional development. This budget also supports our high-quality instructional materials implementation for math and reading, and additionally, Human Resources uses a portion of these funds to support recruitment, retention, and leadership development. Here is our budget comparison from last year to this year, with the biggest change being in the allocation for payroll and contracted services. The increase in contracted services is dedicated to partnering with a capacity builder, TNTP, on training around research-based instructional strategies, high-quality instructional materials, and instructional leadership development. Title Three Part A aims to ensure that emergent bilingual and immigrant students attain English proficiency and develop high levels of academic achievement in English. In BISD, these funds are used to provide funding for specialists and partial funding for a parent liaison. Professional development, resources for teachers, and providing childcare for community ESL and GED classes are also included. In our budget comparison for Title Three, there's a slight increase in total allocation, which can be attributed to BISD seeing a yearly increase in students identified as emergent bilingual. Currently, over forty percent of our students are identified as emergent bilingual students. Additionally, BISD is receiving Title Three Part A immigrant funds. The term immigrant, children and youth, refers to individuals who are aged three through twenty-one, were not born in any state, and have not been attending one or more years in any more states for more than three full academic years. About two percent of our students are identified as immigrant. The overarching goal of Title Four Part A is to increase our capacity to provide all students access to a well-rounded education, improve academic outcomes by maintaining safe and healthy students, and improving the use of technology. We have two district-level coordinators for MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support. They guide campus engagement in MTSS to include response to intervention, social emotional learning, PBIS, and restorative practices. This budget comparison shows an increase in contracted services, which can be attributed to our partnership with Emergentree, an outside provider, which provides training, coaching, and progress monitoring tools, as well as an end-of-the-year program review. Finally, ESUP requires our district to allocate a proportional share of our title funds to children from low-income families that reside in our attendance area and attend private nonprofit schools. BISD partners with Calvary Episcopal School and Good Shepherd Lutheran School, and examples of expenditures include access to professional development and supplemental classroom materials. These campuses must have all purchases approved by BISD, and inventoried items are returned at the end of the grant period. All private nonprofit materials, services, and equipment must be secular, neutral, and non-ideological. And it's important to note that private schools do not directly receive equitable services funds. Funds for the provision of equitable services are allocated to the district. So with ESUP funds, our charge is to determine the unique needs of our students, staff, and other stakeholders in order to prioritize our allocations. BISD works diligently with the use of ESUP federal funds with the goal of impacting student achievement through teacher and leadership instructional effectiveness. I'm happy to entertain any questions about our ESUP funding.
Oh, no. Kyle, we specified what the contracted services were, that we view by the company. On the other title levels, are they similar, the contracted services used for outside businesses to assist in the district, or what is it?
Yes, we partner, we typically partner with contractors that we've used in the past. So for Title Three, we didn't add any new this year, but we're continuing our work.
And just for clarity's sake, what is the definition of emergent bilingual students since we have forty percent of them in our district?
Definition of an emergent bilingual student is a student, Ms. Floris, do you want to say the exact definition? I realized Trish is here, and I thought, I don't want to mess this up.
So an emergent bilingual student is a student who is in the process of developing both their partner language and English simultaneously. So that means they're developing Spanish and English simultaneously.
Thank you.
That's what I was going to say.
You were going to say that, yes.
So do the private schools partake or participate in the ESUP funding?
So we're, yes, we are required to put out a notice stating that we're working on our ESUP budget, and that any private nonprofit schools in our attendance area that would like to participate, they can contact us, and they can do so. And so for the past few years, these two private nonprofit schools are the only schools that have participated with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. All right, moving along here, our financial report is for information only, which brings us to administrative services and human resource report. We're going to have a report on dropout prevention and recovery update from one of our truancy officers, Tricia Muching. And Trish, who else we have with us here today?
Elias Garcia.
All right.
He's also a truancy officer.
Truancy officer in the Cedar Creek feeder pattern, and Ms. Muching's in the Bastrop.
Good evening, Mr. Edwards and members of the board. We appreciate y'all having us out this evening. We're here to give an update on the current dropout recovery process. We're here to give an update on the current dropout recovery process. At the beginning of the school year, from the time the school starts, which was August 16th until the last Friday in September, we have to go out and find any student that left last year and did not enroll, or a no-show, which is any kid that was expected to be there on first day but did not come. When they don't show up on first day, at the end of the day, they're taken out of the system, and it's our responsibility to go out and locate all of them. We have to focus on grade seven through 12. That's what the state follows for the dropout rate. So those schools are the Bassdrop Middle School, Cedar Creek, Bassdrop High, Cedar Creek High, Genesis, and the Colorado River Collegiate Academy. These are currently our numbers right now for these schools. We started with roughly between 400 and 500 kids that we were looking for at the end of first day. We've got it down to 37. We still have a week and a half left to try to find those, and that's where we're currently at in our process. We'll take any questions if y'all have them at this time.
Any questions from the board?
So have these, have these kids moved to other districts, and we just haven't had an opportunity to find out?
Yes, they, some have moved to other districts, some have left the country, some just aren't in school, and because of us, we're getting them back in school.
We have a lot out of state that probably have to communicate with that respective district to figure out when they made, when they made their first day, because it isn't necessarily, we were able to look in the system here to figure out when they're in Texas, right? From out of state, it takes a little bit more work, you know, communicating with registrars in those respective districts.
This is a team effort. It takes many, many people at the campus level. We work closely with the registrars, social workers. Ms. Hoffline from the Service Center, she runs reports for us. When we're having issues too, we reach out to Chris Haywater, Ms. Odom. So we're actually the people who go out in the field and do that, but there's a lot of people on the campuses that help us as well, so we appreciate all their help.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to the operations report. We're going to get an operations update. We have Bill Hanson, which is our Director of Operations. Bill, I'm going to let you list the other individuals that you have here and their businesses that they're with, or?
Right, so, good evening, Mr. Edwards, Warpin. I'm going to talk about operations, including facilities, transportation, and food and nutrition. They have a little treat for you at 7:15 with food. Anyway. Some of the things that are most important, I'm going to start with facilities. We've gone in-house, as you well know. We're one month into it. We're pretty close to being fully staffed and maintenance. I think we have one more that we're waiting to go through background. We've had a lot of background fingerprinting problems. The Bassdrop office eventually closed down because they just couldn't keep up, so that's really slowed us down in terms of getting people to work. The software is fully operational for work orders. We've met and trained. I've met with the principals and their admins, and that all seems to be easy and understandable and working. We're about 430 work orders right now, which is huge. So the expectations too, from the schools, I've met with them and just making sure they understand that we're, we're dealing with, you know, a lot of maintenance, we're dealing with the school district that needs a lot of work. We're trying to catch up with some of the, some of the work orders. HVAC challenges, unbelievable. It's been a little hot this summer. We've spent a lot of money, a lot of work, so I can't tell you, that's been a big stress point, as you can imagine. We're about done. I think almost all five-ton units have been replaced, so we're, we're just about at the point where we're going to see the light at the end of the tunnel, which is great. We just hired a third HVAC tech. He started, or will start next week. We need one more, that makes four. We just hired a plumber. He started Monday. So we're just about there in terms of staffing. And Rick, thanks for all your recruiting efforts. Appreciate it. The fleet update, there seems to be a little strike out there, which isn't helping us, the UAW strike, but we're getting by. We need a few more vehicles, but we're getting by. We're going to make it work. Custodial services on the Bear side, we're, we're, right now, we're actually three short. The Eagle side, Cedar Creek, is, we're actually four short, so we're interviewing, we have two going through fingerprint right now, so we're almost at full capacity. Staff-wise for custodians, fingerprinting, we have about six we're waiting for fingerprints for that.
Is that not something we can buy the equipment and our police department can do, or not?
Oh, it's, it has to be open to the public, so that makes it a little challenging for them to be coming in to schools and stuff. Scott doesn't like that.
No, I just didn't know to help the process move.
Yeah.
Where do y'all have to go?
Well, we, we've thought of everything. It's been a real difficult process.
Where do you have to go to get that done, now that the local office is no longer functioning?
No, where do you have to go, to Austin?
They're going to Flagerville, Austin, San Marcos, anywhere they can get an appointment. Fingerprinting industry is not the best-run industry. I mean, it's, it's been, it's been a challenge, and we're very frustrated because it's keeping so many people from actually starting work, so, you know, we're going to deal with it. Cleaning expectations, that's just making sure that we're, we brought in a lot of the contract SSC people, and we have new people, and we're trying to get everybody to have, you know, the same expectations of what they need to do and how they need to do it. From the ground standpoint, we're four short. That's changed. This is a living document. I'm interviewing four people on Friday, so hopefully we can fill grounds with those four, some good ones. Working with athletics, with Elliot, and making sure we're getting good athletic people in grounds to fulfill the lining of the fields and everything, we need to keep those looking good. All right, JW, Transportation?
Good evening. Thank you all for your time.
Superintendent, Mr. Edwards, thank you all.
So, I'm really excited to be here. This is my first time to ever be in front of a board before, so I'm excited. So, I'm really just excited in general about a lot of things that are going on, both with transportation and being involved in BISD and being here in the community. Like, my family is excited, and if you know me, you've had some time spending, I'm just, I try to be positive every day. So, Transportation, we successfully launched a brand-new routing system, and so it, it's one of the most challenging things that we do, and student transportation is developing a brand-new routing scheme. So when you add new facilities or you develop new bell schedules, you completely rework a room, like, basically, new tape, new texture, everything. So there are a lot of variables that exist with it, that no matter how prepared you may be, you're going to be presented with some challenges that you didn't foresee coming in. So we are excited, we feel like we really got up on the right foot transportation-wise for the new routing system and the new routing scheme itself. A lot of opportunities to, to get better, and then a lot of things that, that we feel really well. New bus registration systems with a data exchange. The PIM's Department and the Technology Department really, really dove in, you know, headfirst with us and helped us develop the registration process to begin to track that information, get it into our routing platform, so that we can provide data to our families and our community members, and then also return that information into our student portal and give the PIM's Departments and the schools at the ground level the opportunity to run reports and data mine and, and put together information there for them instantly. So the goal is, how do I provide information as quick and as instantly possible for community members and then those principals and staff members that are on the front line, you know, every day, trying to sort, you know, sort all those things out. So the new registration system, we are off to a really good start, and we really look forward to a lot of improvements in it. Skyward Bus Data for parents and staff, those of you who, who have students that are riding transportation may have been able to see that by doing that registration process, we've been able to develop, putting the information back into Skyward, and again, it goes back to getting information as quickly and as swiftly as possible at the fingertips of our community members. And so that information now lives in Skyward under the Blessing tab, and you can find it under the BISD app on Skyward. So that, that really does help. It's been a big, big deal. It's like, how do you, how do you get information to somebody as quickly as possible without the phone, right? Because the phone kind of, it makes it challenging, as many students as we provide services to, getting it into one centralized place for them, where they know where to go, where they're also getting other information for, you know, grades and things like that. So that's been really big for us, and we look, we look to that, we look for that to get better as more of our community members become familiar with it and know that it's there for them as a resource to be logged in, and that's where I find my information. That's where it will be, is there, and it will continue to be there, and the data exchange will get faster and more accurate. With the years to come, we'll just be rolling data year over year now, and those who are riding this year will know we'll roll them over, and that information will be more available at a faster rate for them, so, versus being August, the first week of August or second week of August, we looked at, in, toward the ends of July and things of that, beginning to start pushing information and stuff like that to really help for next school year's startup. One thing that we're really happy about, and I'm sure the community members are, is we haven't closed a route since January of this calendar year, and we don't look to do so for the foreseeable future. So everything's operating, and we're not reaching out to families, which is nice to say, you know, this afternoon, this route won't be open, or this morning. That was really hard to do, and we're really happy to not have to do that. And I know that, I'm hoping, that is something we never face again. Another thing that we're really excited about is through, through the growth and the, the district coming and helping us with our wages and our recruiting and things like that, we've been successful with our staffing. It's moving in the right direction. We're operating 56 more individual runs than we did at the start of the last school year. That's a significant number. 14 more total routes. I'm kind of like, Bill, this is a living document. As of Monday, it'll be 15, so we're really excited about that, too. Two new campuses, bell time changes, that was, that was fun, and we're through it, and look forward to the next ones that are coming. We've got some experience under our belt now, and looking forward to the next one. This one was shocking when we started looking at some of the data. I've not seen anything that big before, transporting approximately 1,300 more students daily than we did at the start of the last school year. That's huge. You know, and we're looking at reasons, like, you know, what's driving the number increase? What's, you know, why are folks riding at a higher rate? And we're beginning to kind of put all that information together. A lot of it, we really think is some of the things that we've implemented with Skyward and the data, and then getting information out as fast as possible and centralizing it for them, we think that that's driving up our ridership, which is what we want to do. We want our kids to ride those buses, we want to get them into school, because that's where we want them, is at school. The telematics and comparative analysis, this has been something that's really impacted the staff here at the, at the Transportation Department. We begin using, and telematics is just a fancy way of saying GPS, kind of tracking and stuff, and comparative analysis is, is basically, if you call and you're looking to see, you know, where one, bus one is, we can tell you that it was at Main and First at 15:33 and 36 seconds, and it stopped there for 14 seconds and turned right. And so just really driving home that, in order to provide a good, a good quality service for this community is, we have to be technology-forward, and then our staff also has to learn it and begin to implement it in their processes, and so that's been really beneficial for us using those programs. And then the last thing, and I'm, I'm sure you guys have seen that on Facebook, is we were really excited to roll out with, with the support of the administration team, is Safe Stop application, and that is, and again, at the fingertips of our community members, having information for them, so parents can now track their student's vehicle, put up bound geofences around their houses, it sends them a push notification that says, heads up, your bus is almost there, please come outside, we'll be there waiting for you. It also gives them the peace of mind, is the most important part of it, you know, where is my vehicle? Where's my kiddo? What time did they get to the school? What time did they leave the school? How far away are they from, from us? And what that really does for us operationally is, three minutes may not seem like a bit, big time, but it is to a parent of a pre-care. It's three minutes, where are you? Right? And so what this really, really does, more than anything, is it gives those parents of younger kiddos a peace of mind as to where their vehicle is, and so we're really happy to provide that. That is genuinely, if anybody has any questions, I'd gladly answer what I can.
I have a couple of questions. One, that, do you know how many people have downloaded that app?
That is information I can gather. I can get that for you. It's, I could tell you, we're well, and this was the last time we looked at it, we're well above 1,500, almost 2,000.
That's great.
It's great. It's really good. This, since I've been doing it, this has been the highest volume, like, we've seen instantly. So the public really was looking for it and wanted it, and they're buying in, which has been great.
And then the other question is, so the, the children are, the students are scanning in when they get on the bus, so that they're linked to that bus?
So the students are, are linked to the bus via their registration process in Skyward. So the app itself, in, in, in the simplest form, is a, is a tool to track the vehicle leaving and entering a boundary line, or, you know, where it's coming down 21, like a geolocation of the asset itself.
Gotcha.
We have 1,300 new riders. What's our total approximately?
Yeah, so it varies from day to day, and also depends on, you know, what athletic event may be going on or what season that we're in, and so we're, we're well above 7,000 students transporting right now.
I have a couple of questions also. Thanks, JW, for talking to me this week, by the way. So with this increase in riders and added routes, and you feel, you feel confident you're staffed pretty well right now, do you, what is your forecast for needing additional drivers and, you know, other staff? I know we talked about rider, ridership, and sometimes it's three, three kids in a seat and things of that nature, and so there's something about that formula, and I don't think it's a formula necessarily, you said, so if you could just recap that.
So I, I think the one thing that I want to never do is get complacent when it comes to staffing. Like, I don't think that we're ever going to be right where we want to be. I think that as long as we stay focused on making sure that we are always recruiting and always looking to keep our subpools as full as possible, we'll be, we'll be successful. So we, we will never let off the throttle for recruiting and staffing. It will be a constant year-round effort, and ideally, what we, what we'd like to see is, in the next few months, adding more and more and additional routes, we'd like to see, you know, at, at least 10 more routes to be added across the district. We feel like that would be something that would be beneficial, but again, that's driven, you know, by staffing, and so what we are in the process of right now is filling what we, we call our subpool, like, our cover drivers. We have a, we have a driver for every route, and we are in the process of filling and looking for those individuals who want to be sub-drivers. And it's a challenge finding substitute school bus drivers. It's a unique thing to do, get on a different route every day and drive to somewhere that you may have never seen with, you know, 50 kiddos on the bus. What we'd like to see is continue to add and recruit and get more drivers to create relief in those places that we're seeing high dense ridership. We have, we have our eye on a couple of routes where we'd like to see at least three to four quick, swift changes, and ideally, I think that if we implemented those in the next two months to three months, that we would create some really nice relief for some of the community members. That would be the goal.
And are the additional buses available for our growth?
They are. Oh, yeah.
So adding those new routes, does that reduce the amount of time that the student actually spends on the bus, like, who wants to get some first?
In some of our areas, yes. In some of, some of our areas, they're, they're, the travel time alone, it makes it very challenging, and I'll use our, our, the page area as a really good example, just the travel alone, travel time alone, you know, is 20-plus minutes there and, and then 20 back. So you're looking at 35 to 40 minutes of just what we call deadhead time, traveling to and from a specific location. That doesn't take into any picking up any kiddos, making stops, or any other nosebleeds or any wild stuff.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Great job.
Thanks, JW.
Hey, everyone. I've met a few of you guys. Once again, my name's Stuart Murray. I'm the K-12 General Manager for Child Nutrition with Tahoe Inc. Just one slide, so I'll keep it simple and sweet for you guys. Actually, two. Okay. So we started off onboarding approximately 107 employees over the summer, and that was a transition piece from the previous food service contractor. Once we did that, we hired around service contractor. Once we did that, we hired around 14 more employees to start the school year. That in total was about six to eight part-time employees short. Similar to what JW said, it's difficult to find that part-time or sub. So we are still constantly recruiting some part-time people to help with serving during the operations. They might not need help in the morning. They might just need help during the serving time. So we're constantly recruiting, making sure, and like Bill said, it's a living document. We've lost three and added two since this slide was created. So in the week or two, it's, it's gone backward one, but we have two onboarded next week. So it's, it's constantly moving forward. The biggest, I guess, win or thing in comparison to compare to last year versus this year, the first 12 operating days from the month of August, we did an additional 34,563 meals versus the 12 operating days last year in August.
Additional?
Additional. So that's roughly, on average, 3,200 meals per day more this August. So that's our biggest kind of thing. And what that contributes to is lots of made-from-scratch dishes. Tahoe believes in 70 to 80% made-from-scratch. There is a place for heat and serve your chicken nuggets, your steak fingers, that sort of stuff. We still do those, but we do made-from-scratch pizzas. So pizzas across the board at every single site. Everyone's favorite has changed. The recipe's different. So those sort of big wins that we, we do, the students love, we see it day in and day out. We're doing lots of big things. The first 30 days, that's normally the slower period in our, in our operating days throughout the school year. So the month of September and October are kind of where it even drives up further. So we're expecting bigger and better things each month. And this past week, we were special to have a, you could call him a celebrity chef. He's on a, on a sushi TV show currently. I swear I didn't plan that.
(laughing)
I swear I did not plan that.
Man, you guys are good.
So this is Chef Don Sugamura. I, he's here from Minnesota, Japanese raised, Minnesota born. And he wanted to come and speak to you guys and say a few words also. And teaser, he's the one that came up with the special treat for you guys also.
Awesome. Come on up.
Well, great to be here. If Bruce Tahoe, my boss, was here, he would say, thanks for having me. See, we were at Cedar Creek today, so we just hit shy of 3,900 kids fed with the gyodon, the same meal that, you're having the same exact meal, whether you eat it or not, you're going to gracefully walk out with it in your hand and you're going to pretend like you're going to love it, okay? But you're eating the exact same meal as the kids. And nothing that you haven't heard before, but again, if Bruce was here, you know, this is exemplifies Tahoe's chef-driven. So I'm one of the chef councils, chefs. I'm Japanese trained in Japan. I'm a third-generation Japanese-American. And with my food, we are trying to do food that when you're on the program, Japanese food, USDA is right here, no matter what I make, I'm down here, I have less sodium than they, I don't have to cut anything. If you do Italian or something, you got to take off the cheese. You know, you have to bring down the sodium. What's that?
Wait a minute.
But you know what I mean? Don't get me wrong. I like, but you know what I'm saying? Japanese food is not contributing to childhood obesity. It is not contributing. In every serving of rice, it's one gram of added sodium. It's very tangible and measurable. If you were a nutritionist, you would like this food. It's pure, it's pristine, and it's served in its most pure and pristine fashion. But the gyodon, the spicy bowl, the most popular bowl for kids in Japan, anywhere in Japan right now. You can have it spicy or mild. It's typically served spicy. It has tsunamono, which are quick pickles. Somebody asked me, what does quick pickles mean? So what it means is, on the program, they're not pasteurized. So those pickles are made hours before. So it counts as a vegetable. It's not a garnish. It's not two dill pickles on your hamburger. It is, you'll see the portion. They're getting a one ounce vegetable portion with the pickles. So every one of those things, including the garlic, ginger, and cabbage and everything like that, is not just to zhuzh up the dish. That is counting as their vegetable. So this is a very thoughtful recipe that, again, 3,800 kids have been enjoying so far. We'll be at Cedar Creek High School tomorrow. We'll do another 1,300 and we'll be able to hit the 5,000 mark. But what that really means is you have 5,000 kids that are not eating pizza. You have 5,000 kids that is not eating a burger by default every day. You have 5,000 kids that's opening their world to include Japan. You have 5,000 kids that are eating something that might have a new flavor, a new flair, or something new for them to just say, I'm going to be open to something new. And we're talking about Japan all the time. We're doing the culinary and culture classes. We have one more tomorrow. And Life Skills has participated as a previous special ed autism specialist. So we include special ed in all the culinary classes and they've participated on day one as well. But really, thanks for having us. Thanks for letting us do the special this early into our kickoff with you. It's been good fun. It's been great for the team. We were talking about it. You know, some people might say it's overwhelming to do it this early. Other people might say it's just the right strategy to light a fire under everybody. But I think it was very successful. And anybody that's around for lunch tomorrow, please join us. If you have any questions?
(laughing)
If you have any questions or anything like that. But otherwise, we'll have it out on the table. You guys can take it in packs. And there's a Japanese iced tea as well bottle out there for you to have with it.
Okay, I have a question.
All right.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
For our students, how are they doing? Edgar and Brooke. How are they doing?
Can we tell the difference in the food service, learning from the other students from last year versus this year?
Yeah, compare it.
I did hear a little bit about the serving size being smaller.
The food's so good, they want more.
Yeah, yes. But that's the only thing that I've heard.
If I can address, so today's meal, one of the reasons why we do the Japanese meal particularly, so they are getting five ounces of protein. And I did not set her up for that question. Five ounces of protein to three to four ounces of starch. So your protein is up here. Your starch is down there. They're getting their nutrition from meat and vegetables, but not just starch. So that's why we do these other enhancements or limited time offerings. So some days, it's a standard commodity chicken patty that's this big. You know, it is what it is. But then the next day, we can do something special to balance that off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so everyone knows, if you didn't hear it, so last Wednesday, Sugamura started at all secondary sites. And so if you're, if you were there, the principals or students or staff, he went to Circa and then Bastrop High, then Bastrop Intermediate, then Bastrop Middle, then Cedar Creek Intermediate, then yesterday Cedar Creek Middle, and he finishes tomorrow at Cedar Creek High School. So if anybody's around during lunch, he'll be there during Cedar Creek High School's tour. And just to reiterate, tho, those extra meals, you know, I, I gave the culinary staff a menu. It's them, the, the, the people you see every day in the kitchens, those are the ones that are doing the hard work. And they're the heroes. Our two chefs, Brian Curry and Chef Michael Nonyas, they're the culinary skills, training them. So, you know, I'm, it's not me, it's them. They're doing all the work and, and they're the ones that should get all the credit. So just let you guys know that. And that's it. Any other questions?
No, thank you very much. As I brought to a good start, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along here, it looks like our police department report and safety and security report is for information only, as well as our communications and community relations report. This will move us into our consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any consent agenda item for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along here to our action items. Consider approval of construction manager at risk. Our chief financial officer, Dina Egger, welcome back.
Dina, just before you get started, I want to introduce Mr. Raspberry Lee. Are you back there? If you'd come up to the front real quick. I don't need you to say anything. I just want to put a face. Lee is our new construction and planning director. And why it's significant that he comes up with this plan is he's going to be managing all the 20, rest of the 21 bond and the 2023 bond that's coming up. So as we make our recommendation on our construction manager at risk, Lee will be the one behind the scenes managing these projects for us. So we want to welcome you to the district and we look forward to everything that you're going to get done. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, I see a big smile on you and Dr. Lee's face. That's a role that y'all have been doing and glad to have some, some help and some, some expertise. So, welcome.
Yes, we have a lot going on with the 2023 bonds. So we're very happy to have him on board. We're going to be running kind of consecutive projects at the same time and a little bit different than the 21 bond. But proposals were received on August 29th for construction manager at risk services. The forum firms submitting responses to the RFP were American Constructors, Bartlett Cock General Contractors, Chasco Contractors, and Dry Mala Construction. So each of these contractors did receive an award for projects. And I'm going to run through how we, how we've done that. So American Constructors was awarded Projects 1 and 2, which include Elementary Number 9, continuation of Bastrop High School, the intermediate conversions and middle school reservation, renovations for a total of 162.9 million. Bartlett Cock will work on the Cedar Creek High School additions and Mina Phase 2 for a Package 4 total of 48.1 million. Chasco has Package 3, which includes the new Operations and Police Center and Gateway and Circogenesis renovations for a total of 15.9 million. And then Dry Mala was awarded Package 5, which is Elementary School Number 10 at an approximate cost of 41.7 million. The rubric is included in your board packet this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think it's important that the board know that to stick to our timeline, we, we need to spread this out amongst other contractors and also search the, the subpool up in the Houston area. Dry Mala's out of Columbus. They've done workforce as well in, in the district. And, and so that way, I think we already got one of our brand-new ele, elementaries at max capacity there.
We do.
And Cedar Creek area. So we definitely need to get those other two opened up and built as soon as we can. Any questions from the board? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to award the contractor, construction manager at risk services to American Constructors, Bartlett Cock General Contractors, Chasco Contractors, and Dry Mala Construction as presented.
We have a motion. Then we have a second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstained. We have six ayes and I abstain. All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving along here, we will consider employees resignation without good cause and proposed complaint to the state Board of Educate, Educators, Certification for abandonment of contract. Ms. Leifer, our Associate Superintendent of Administrative Services and Human Resources.
Good evening, board. Mr. Edwards, I do bring to you one resignation tonight without good cause. And the individual is Julian Bionis, a meal elementary kindergarten teacher. She started with us August 8th, 2022 on a probationary contract. Her last day with us was August 29th of 2023. That day, she sent her email, her principal an email that said she would be resigning. She stated it was unforeseen circumstances and life changes. HR made several attempts by phone and email to communicate with her if there was like a medical issue, or if it was a promotion, staff for herself, or her husband, or family member, if she was taking care of medical needs for her family. She did not respond to any of our correspondence.
Any questions from the board?
I just have one question. Can I, when there is no response like that, do we make any other, I mean, do we know she's safe or she's okay physically? You know, is there, do we ever check to see if there's any reports made to law enforcement or hospitals or things like that? I was just curious.
This is really the first time this has ever really happened. Usually they'll respond and say, you know, I'm not interested in this profession or whatever. This, I don't know of any correspondence to check on her safety. Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent as presented. Then we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that'll move us along here to consider approval of District of Innovation Amendment for House Bill 114. Ms. Leifer?
Yes. So legislative session was held over the summer and the spring, which inevitably brings change to public education and requirements on how we operate. The change that I bring to your attention this evening are consequences for students that are involved with the offense that deals with vaping, e-cigarettes, THC, marijuana, and nicotine. In the new mandated requirements, a student shall be removed from class and placed in a disciplinary alternative education program, which is our Gateway Campus. This allows for no flexibility other than just mandatory placement, zero tolerance with an automatic DAE placement for all students for vaping, which includes nicotine. We received advisement from our legal counsel to, the recommendation was to add a component to our District of Innovation Plan that you guys approved in the spring. We pulled the DOI committee together. We had two virtual meetings, September the 5th, one at noon and one at 5:30. We went through all the new legal requirements, what our options were. DOI requires a majority vote for a change. 66.7% of the members voted for keeping our current practices for nicotine, which is two days in ISS on the campus, three days, and then a DAEP placement. 33.3% were in favor of changing to one assignment in ISS and then a Gateway placement. Cabinet had discussion on both of those meetings. We also had discussion with our Gateway Principal, Zach Allison. So the final proposal was to have some flexibility from our DOI committee for our BISD DOI plan. Relief from the statute that allows Bastrop ISD to develop their own discipline matrix as it relates to misconduct involving nicotine. The final result was first nicotine offense will have two days in ISS. What we added was students will be required to complete an online educational course on the effects of smoking nicotine. Our attempt there is to educate these students on the effects of it, so hopefully they'll quit smoking. Additionally, that student will sign a document outlining the next disciplinary consequences if they continue to violate the student code of conduct with regards to nicotine. This notice will also be provided to the parents of the student with the nicotine offense. The second offense, they'll have three days ISS. The third offense, they will go to Gateway for 15 days with a second required educational component with certificate. Are there any questions at this time?
Yes. So our change, our flexibility is on nicotine, not on THC.
That's correct. Nicotine only.
And our campuses, or maybe just tell us, I think we discussed this before, but if somebody has one of these vape pens, how do we know what it is?
Our police department has a testing system that they decide if it's THC or something other than that. Yes, sir.
So we're able to test in-house, which can test quicker.
That's correct. Yes, sir. That day.
Yeah, this is something that the, the board discussed, and I think it's important for the, definitely the principals to, to, to hear that, you know, we're not, we, we want to approve something that helps y'all manage this process, that y'all feel that is appropriate. I know our number one goal is to not have those substances in our schools, which we're working very hard for that. But two, when they are there and they are caught with those substances or things like that, we didn't, the last thing we want to do is go backwards in the discipline process. And so if we feel that, hearing a little bit that this is appropriate, what the, you know, the, the principals and that need at the campuses to, you know, manage this process in these situations, then, you know, sounds like the right changes.
Yes, sir.
Can I, as far as the legislation for this, was there any funding associated with this? Or is this just a mandate?
It was a mandate.
Okay. And our DOI designation allows us room to move away from that legislation?
Yes, sir. We have eight components. This would add our ninth component to our plan that we currently have. I like the addition of the, of the educational component. We think it's very important that we educate them on the hazards of the nicotine. Yes.
Any other questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the additional component that will, that will amend it to the Bastrop ISD District of Innovation Plan as presented.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Leifer. We appreciate it. All right, I think what all the principals are here waiting on. We'll move here to consider approval of the 2023 and 2024 District Improvement and Campus Improvement Plans. Ms. Mock, which is our Director of School Improvement and Federal and State Programs, welcome back again.
Well, thanks. I wish I could be like food services and bring food or improvement plan cookies or something, but maybe next time.
Next time.
Yes. So, per Texas Education Code, all districts must have an improvement plan that is developed, evaluated, and monitored by a decision-making committee. And the principals you see here tonight engaged in a comprehensive needs assessment that begins in the spring of each year, where committees take a look at qualitative and quantitative data to identify trends and next steps in their improvement plans. The true purpose of our improvement plans is to improve student performance for all student groups, to close achievement gaps, and to support systemic change. Tonight, we're bringing you the finalized 2324 District and Campus Improvement Plan objectives for board approval. Our work in improving our schools is grounded in the BISD vision in that every student graduates prepared for life's challenges and ready for tomorrow's opportunities. And we can see that vision come to light by living our mission of developing every, developing and educating every student so they can make a positive impact for families, the workforce, and the greater community. In spring of 2022, stakeholder groups engaged in creating a multi-year strategic plan for BISD, which produced four strategic priorities designed to be the starting point for our annual performance objectives in our improvement plans. The four core values of student success and well-being, teaching and learning practices, organizational culture, and collaborative partnerships are directly tied to our district and campus plans and they document the needs of our students, staff, and other stakeholders. On the next few slides, we'll break down the alignment of the strategic priorities into performance objectives, which are designed to identify specific measurable actions. You'll see SMART goals. What you see here is the strategic priority directly above that performance objective. Within student success and well-being, the first performance objective can be measured by evidence of SEL lessons being implemented in classrooms and reduced student discipline incidents. The second performance objective regarding self-management skills is measured directly by student voice by way of a survey administered to third through 12th grade students two times per year. And the final performance objective you see there can be measured throughout the year by various assessments, but will ultimately be measured by the 2024 STAR assessment. And you may notice that this goal is at the meets grade level. As a reminder, passing the STAR test has three levels, approaches grade level, meets grade level, and masters grade level. Now, campus principals and their leadership teams write strategies to achieve each one of those performance objectives. As you can see in the plans that you have before you, there are several strategies listed, but here we're just going to highlight some of the campus strategies that are aligned. In addition to addressing social, emotional, learning, and student discipline trends, campuses have identified ways to promote professional learning for their staff members, as well as processes for students to take ownership of setting and achieving personal goals. In teaching and learning practices, the first performance objective is in place to measure implementation of the new high-quality instructional materials around math and reading. The next performance objective hones in on some specific student groups at the meets grade level. This domain of the state and federal accountability system has unique targets for each one of these student groups. And the final performance objective here measures professional learning developed and delivered by both the district and campus leaders. You can see here that campus leaders have designed strategies to support teachers in curriculum implementation and meeting the needs of all students. Leaders at our campuses are providing targeted feedback to teachers, which will include observing high-performing teachers in our district and debriefing on how to implement strategies that cultivate high expectations. Leaders are additionally carving out times for teachers to internalize lessons prior to delivery and to analyze student work. This collaborative planning also paves the way for designing student experiences that provide intervention or enrichment, or maybe even both. We have three performance objectives for organizational culture. The attendance performance objective has a clear measure, as you can see in the aligned piece of the strategic plan. It is about creating conditions that are so welcoming that students and others want to be in BISD classrooms every single day. The next performance objective is another item that will be directly measured by student voice on surveys and focuses on students perceiving our schools as safe places. And the next piece of organizational culture focuses on the hard work by our human resources department and campus leaders in retaining our valuable staff and other, and teachers. To address student attendance, campuses will be implementing ways to educate students and families on the importance of not missing that instructional time. Campus safety procedures, including ensuring classroom door lock fidelity checks, will ensure staff and students are as safe as possible. And finally, campus leaders are determined to retain staff through providing personalized feedback and coaching designed to increase teaching efficacy and satisfaction. The first two performance objectives here focus on our parents, families, and community member involvement. Our measures will be around survey data to give us feedback on perceptions of opportunities to engage with our campuses, as well as counts of stakeholders who are with us throughout the year. The third strategic priority here is about accessing our external partnerships to influence the college career and military readiness measure, which will be measured in 2024 accountability data. Strategies related to collaborative partnerships include providing opportunities for parents not only engage and participate, to participate in events like Open House or Math or Literacy Night, but to engage them in learning opportunities directly related to their students' learning. Also included are strategies to ensure students are prepared for post-secondary opportunities that begin with coursework and testing in our high schools. Finally, and still within the core value of collaborative partnerships, we have the performance objective to execute and oversee the bond programs with fidelity. While this performance objective may not have a directly aligned strategic priority, it does tie directly to our mission, our vision, and certainly to our motto, "Their future is our focus." I am happy to entertain any questions you may have about our 2324 District and Campus Improvement Plans.
One question. I saw the turnover rate. Maybe Ms. Leifer knows this number off the top of her head. But it said decrease it to 11%. What was it this last year? I want to say 20. 24. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to y'all for all your hard work. I was worn out reading the plan, so I can imagine what y'all went through.
All the plans.
But yeah, thank you. We appreciate you what you're doing.
Yeah, it's amazing. I talked to Mr. Edwards and the bar's always getting raised, not only academically or by the state in regards to testing, but there's safety and security and there's other threats coming in from vaping and, you know, you hear about fentanyl and all these other things and all the door checks and the audits from the state. And then there's a, there's a lot on y'all's shoulders and we want to thank you. We do, I wouldn't say understand it. We haven't done it, but we know that the job is growing and responsibility, let alone managing the faculty that you have there and the students. And plus, we're growing. It's just amazing how fast we're growing. You can definitely tell by the transportation report. So, thank you very, very much. We appreciate it. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the 2023-2024 BISD District and Campus Improvement Plan Performance Objectives as presented.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Mock, thank you very much for all your hard work as well.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving along here. We'll consider a approval of a memorandum of understanding between Bassdrop ISD and Accu, is it Tronic? All right, Amanda Brantley, which is our Director of College and Career and Military Readiness.
Unfortunately, I'm not the tongue of Ms. Brantley. Yeah, she's at home, sick with some little ones that's sick as well. So I'm going to try to fill in for her big shoes. Our first MOU that I'm coming up here to present on her behalf is an MOU with Accutronics. This MOU fulfills the requirements of a formal industry partner for our PTEC programs as outlined in our Texas Education Designation Application and Blueprint for our PTEC schools. This partnership will, with Accutronics, will create advising for course designs, industry-based certification options, and target occupations for students enrolled in our PTEC programs, as well as provide work-based learning opportunities for students in our programs 9 through 12. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions about the MOU.
If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Bassdrop ISD and Accutronic for PTEC Manufacturing Academy as presented.
Motion, and we have a second by Dr. Mixt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, well, please stay up there. Now we need to consider approval of memorandum of understanding between Bassdrop ISD and the Family Crisis Center.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this MOU is a partnership with the Family Crisis Center, which is a local violence prevention program. With this MOU, they will provide educational seminars to middle school and high school youth utilizing their mentor violence prevention program curriculum, provide ongoing community engagement strategies for middle school and high school youth, and facilitate training programs with adults that address risk and proactive factors associated with topics covered within their curriculum. And we would like to recommend that y'all approve this MOU. But I'm happy to take any questions about it.
Dr. Wolford, we talked on Thursday night about the curriculum and that it was in alignment with the community values. If a parent wanted to review that curriculum, is there a way to do that?
Yes, all they need to do is reach out to us or one of the campuses. We always give them access to any curriculum pieces.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
And part of it is the community outreach, that they, they're involving the community and talking to parents. So it's a prevention program.
Okay, thank you.
And this is for identified youth at risk.
Part of it will be to identify those students that would be best served with it.
Any other questions, Dr. Wolford? All right, this time I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Bassdrop ISD and Family Crisis Center as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second by Trustee Dylan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. For information items there, the Board of Trustees calendar of events, as well as enrollment and single budget purchases, more than $50,000 are for information only. At this time, we'll now go into our closed session. So if many of y'all want to mosey on home, feel free to do that. But I do need to read this statement right quick. The board will now convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following items on the agenda this evening, followed by the Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the attorney, and 551.074 Personnel Matters. No voting will take place in this closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of this discussion in the closed session will be placed after the board reconvenes into the open meeting. It is now 7:13 and we will go into closed session after we grab our food out here so we can eat it in there.
All right, are we ready? Okay. The time is now eight seventeen PM and the board will now reconvene in open session. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to adopt-
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I move to adopt a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Blastrop Independent School District regarding the A to F Accountability System would direct the superintendent to take the necessary steps to join the litigation as presented.
Second?
If a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to consider adoption of a resolution to declare a good cause exception for HB3.
I move to adopt a resolution to declare a good cause exception for HB3 as presented. Second?
If a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Are there any objections to adjourning this meeting?
None.
If there are none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.